Let's bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you once again for a wonderful year that you've given us and for the safety that you've kept us in. Lord, we pray for the school system, the director, and the people that are on this board. We ask that your hand be upon them and we know they have tough decisions to make. We ask you, Lord, to guide them. We ask you to protect them, protect our students, dear Lord, as we get ready for the new school year, protect our teachers, our drivers that drive the buses, all those that are involved in getting the kids ready for school, and those that feed the kids in school. We ask that you bless them. Lord, we just ask that you bless this whole council and help their decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Can you call this meeting the camp technical section order? Again, check in through classes.
Me, I'm Blake Ivy, captain. This is co-captain Elliot Lay and Zach Sulfridge, and we were the ones who have won three times in a row. First time in fourth grade, we came in second place to Sullivan County. Next year, fifth grade, we beat 'em, and that was our first time we won. Then in sixth grade, at Jacksonville Middle, we won again. That's our second time in a row. And now, in seventh grade, at Jacksonville Middle, we won three times in a row. We're the only team to win three times in a row in the history of Tennessee. Campbell County, this is, we represented Campbell County, and we're proud of it. Thank you.
Absolutely outstanding, outstanding. We have young, intelligent, characterless, and come forward and show back what ladies can give to this success. The life, especially for us, Lord, here all the bad and see all the good. Thank you each other. Congratulations. Approval of consent agenda or a motion?
Motion for.
Your say. Do you remember which change of vote?
Norris, Gird, yes. Collins, yes. Rick Moore, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Warren, yes. Parker, yes. Motion.
Approval of regular agenda. We have the agenda line up. Question, question. We have shot the global serving line against high schools. Eight health, which is the considered increasing class by employees receiving payment related to sixty, rated seventy-five dollars per day upon retirement. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? So moved. My. Your say. Do you remember which change of vote?
Miller, yes. Gird, yes. Collins, yes. Rick Moore, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Warren, yes. Parker, yes. Motion.
Approval of regular agenda. We have the agenda line up. Seven D, questions, which we have shot the global serving line against high schools. Eight health, which is the considered increasing class by employees receiving payment related to sixty, rated seventy-five dollars per day upon retirement. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? So moved. My. Your say. Do you remember which change of vote?
Miller, yes. Gird, yes. Collins, yes. Rick Moore, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Warren, yes. Parker, yes. Motion.
Thank you. I'm going to move official chair acting director under the force of I think this one address new program that will then be. So if you don't, I'll have to tell them.
First of all, let me say how proud I am of this, this Clover Bowl. That's, that's a pleasure. I've heard of it. We're real proud of it. Guess what? Just keep on keeping on. You'll be on the national news. Proud of it. Another big announcement, I guess someone's already heard. Yesterday, we were given a grant of seventy-five thousand, almost seventy-six thousand dollars from the Poly Medical Foundation for our influenza vaccination program and so on. We appreciate the cooperation from the Hospital Foundation and medical organizations to help different ones, help us with this each year. And one of the reasons that our attendance has not been affected by influenza, as it has in some of the other systems, is because of vaccinations that are given. So we're so thankful to get that grant again also. Mr. Miller mentioned, meant to go about the announcement that was played last week regarding some of the things the mayor wanted to, uh, try to partner with the school systems and others in the county. The Campbell County Community Foundation is an organization, it's a nonprofit charitable foundation that, uh, that has been started in the county, and they're going to be assisting some of our programs. And the main thing that they were, uh, we were needing help from was our alternative programs that we got started in. And we had, we had these underway last year, and we needed financial help, and this also played into some of the things that they were wanting to do, helping some of the needs and risks to do, that's for sure. Uh, we, we lost our race to the top, our anniversary to the top. We needed funding partners, and they're going to help us fund the programs that we have helped decent part of running academy and high schools and middle school. But a lot of the programs that we have is the company called Edmunity, of course, will be funded after this week. This is the company that they use again to help us meeting some of the, serve some of the students. We served about four hundred students last year. We had students at creative program, we had students at gap program, at Delco and Campbell County High. We have students who are in the extended home program, uh, students who have discipline issues, some have medical issues, and so we're trying to meet some of those needs without those kids being at risk or not getting through school. So, and we have this alternative placement committee that's in, that we have that will approve the applications for all the students. That includes Sandy Wilson, Michelle Young, Larry Knight, Nancy Lee, who's the principal of the school with the children rep. This is not a virtual school in terms of what we understood the virtual school to be. What we're trying to do is take the kids we've got and use, and one of the things that parents have to have to meet some of these, uh, through the internet and also computer where they can do some of these things at home, get some of these at-risk students where they will make it through school. But applications have to be approved by this alternative placement committee, and parents and students would have to meet every other week as far as progress report, and then will be given out. We did this last year. We won, it was our first year, we tried to do this, and we kind of did a few sessions to help see this increase. We'll be giving out information packages. We're going to be partnering with Anderson County and some of the things that they're doing also, uh, program. And some that they're going to share with us, some packages that they're sending out with their parents when they monitor their students. We want to, we don't want to reinvent, we don't want to partner with anyone that wants to make sure that a lot of these kids don't fall through the cracks. One of the things the mayor brought to the table, generation, was assistance to struggling students who thought they had a fight to work. And that's what we were all about. But he's also talking about other things which is separate from, from our alternative school. He's starting to drop out academy, and that's something that can be in partnership with the Rome State Community College and kind of get those students get thought, because they need to complete some of their high school programs. And also, we've been talking about improving advanced options for gifted and talented students who need accelerated program. And I'm glad to say that shared this the other day, we have five students who have been accepted in the Steel Academy in Austin. And we'll be the pilot system of East Tennessee next year, or the other systems back in the area that will have students who will be eligible to go to the Steel Academy. It'll be on the lottery system after this first year, and it'll be more like two or three students maximum, mutual outline, uh, account. So we'll be, we'll be having five students there, and information as far as the people of the record, funding and everything, we're working out those details now, which will be considered Campbell County students. And I think this is, it's a good partnership. Of course, that is, that goes along with some of the doubt, but he's also looking at programs, bringing, getting men force in some of the schools. And of course, this, we've got a lot of things we have to work out for that because of background checks. Years ago, we had a program similar to that under the total foul, uh, adult student program. We'll look at some of those programs that we had then and see how similar they could be used in, in some of the mental programs. And of course, they're, they're also talking about expanding and improving the arts program throughout the county and the school. But our, our main emphasis and our partnership mainly with them and with the foundation is to get funding to provide the programs that we practically got started last year, and we hope to expand on those. And it just better ensures, once again, and the goal of Campbell County Community Foundation and what we're trying to do is to ensure that students are prepared for jobs of the future and improvements of all their life in Campbell County. And so we'll be partners in that effort. Thank you, Mr. Miller, concerned. It is not in terms of a virtual school like we understood virtual school, what we were going through last year, no way of normalizing. There will be computer-based programs that will be in place, and they will be overseen by our, our placement.
I would like to start. My mom is saying that this now took me by surprise when I saw this out in the comments. According to our policy, any new programs that are instituted curriculum-wise has to be approved before approval before the education. I don't think that's been done. Would you plan on bringing this before the board?
Well, this, see, this is what we're behind those funds, and that's what they provide for what we're going to get. That's all that's done.
Was according to the reports, you correct me if I'm wrong, it says that this new learning academy was the start setting the program.
That's a term of use. Once again, let me repeat, what we're doing, what we're doing for them is this very thing that I shared with Matt. We are partnering with them on the funding for these programs that we have to play. We are in no position, I don't think, just to have a start of this. And we have decent part of learning academy, and we have, we have these programs in place, so I'm not for, I'm not for starting a virtual school.
But I'm still confused. I will call, let me just read, I'd like to read. Under the leadership, direction, supervision, and supervised construction, a unified curriculum shall be developed for the school system, each separate area, and presented to the board for adoption. Experimentation with newer concepts of curriculum design, scheduling, instructional techniques is encouraged, but must have prior approval of the principal. An experimental program requires the approval of the director's booth, board, commission of education, and state. Now, when I see virtual academy being sold, that we are going to be involved in a virtual academy, to me, that's a new program. I know we have audacity, I know that we try and get more kids on that through the alternative learning center, but I don't want this to be viewed, you clarified that, with any efforts to put a virtual school in, because this board and Anna's will voted not to have a virtual school. Now, if the board wants to have a virtual school, then we can, we can go back to that. And the way I read this is this is an outreach to put in some form of virtual learning in our alternative school. Now, we've come a long way on our alternative learning, and if we get a lot of other components in it, we, now, according to this article, if I'm wrong, you're going to have adult men boards over at the learning academy?
We're hoping to do the very same thing that we've done over the years, have men boards and all this.
But I'm saying, are we going to have a hundred, too?
We're certain four hundred, yeah.
But are we going to have a hundred at the alternative?
Well, if, if the numbers come to a hundred, right now, we're following the same plan that we almost followed for the first place. Now, what you have is a document there, and, and that photo, you know that. What I'm saying is, what we're trying to do is partner with them on funding what we're trying to do to provide these kids at risk.
The initial fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars.
As I said to you first, no money for education, but go towards the program.
And we're hoping that about thirty-seven thousand dollars to be able to fund this Edmunity program. And we don't have, they say they're getting ready to pronounce a check.
Okay, that's the way. Well, I just hope that we follow both policies, and that any curriculum that's changed or attitude is brought through the board. I think we have CISO in, making it know what's going on, personal life. My comment is that I just, I hope we go in that direction, and that we don't make decisions like this about the whole work. That's what we're, that's what our job is, to oversee it, make sure that programs like this are really discussed, what out there, and understand what our children are involved in. So I hope that maybe force that family, maybe next month's meeting, obviously, more clarification of this, and get more guidelines of what the program really is. I'd like to know what it is. I don't know what that is. I mean, is it a new program at risk years, or is it?
They've got, yeah, they've got several different.
Oh, no, we need, we need to approve that program. So I would hope we do this, that's all I have to say. Anybody else have any comments? I'd like to hear from them.
We're all really huge.
Right. But there's a lot of new things you guys mentioned, you're both out there that we have to prove.
And some of these things that have been mentioned as far as what they want to do tonight is going to be to partner with them because of the fact that all of us want to support the community.
Well, absolutely.
And that's basically what we're doing for those to partner.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Okay, what is to do with our partnering with?
It's Campbell County Community Foundation, it's that foundation that, they're helping us, they're helping us fund, they're linked to East Tennessee Foundation, they're helping us fund some of the programs that we need to.
Now, I'm saying. Oh, is that?
There's a board, I'm not sure.
Now, I heard you mention, I heard you said that we're partnering with Anderson County.
See, they, they have an alternative program down there. I think that, so what we want to do is not reinvent the wheel on some of the things as far as like packets of information that they're doing, successful, there with some of their end of this too, and we share with them, they share with us, like we do in this city. And they've done an alternative.
I really feel like they've done a lot of work on their alternative student. They don't tolerate that, they don't tolerate it. And where our kids be, will we, we're just sharing and transferring information, will they have kids here, will we have kids there, or even that?
Their kids, they, they hear one, it's just, it's just like, if you've got anything that works, they'd be willing to share. And so that's, uh, that's like Larry, he's a national CPE, and he told me this morning that he's sitting with the Anderson County group, he says, we've been sharing some of the things regarding their alternative program.
What they've been doing.
A lot of good things that they're doing.
Another thing I'm sure you can say is, we've got as many as four hundred students that we, uh, were in this program last year. Okay, now, we're hoping, uh, those alternative students for two different reasons, one is for different areas, and another is, is you catch up if you're behind, you try to hit the catch up. Now, what does the gap program, how does it tie in with, to get those four hundred kids, we must have had four programs, rather than just those two things that I'm thinking about?
Yeah, we, we had kids, two hundred and something at Campbell County High, a hundred and something, I've got a hundred or something, had a hundred and something at Delco. We had two hundred and thirteen at Campbell County High, a hundred and eighty at Delco High, two at just Middle, Poly Middle, forty-three there at Ella, and then we had, we have some students that are like homebound, medically, uh, homebound, and we have.
We're including all these athletes.
Some of these kids that we can help with our, with our, with our home, with their homebound program and what we've got online to help them. See, alternative school, we don't want to be just here in this place, we want to be the hub of everything that we can do as far as advancing some of the, some of these kids that are at risk and.
Now, all the personnel that work for these, they're not assigned to the alternative school. We've got four hundred kids, we only have about four or five people assigned to alternative school. But these people that work at the high school that's in the gap program, included in what we're talking about here.
Then also with, uh, we're going to be doing an extended contract with, we did last year with, it's like, and she'll work about two hours in the evening to check all these kids and their programs. And then every two weeks, we check the parents and the residents, or the parents that they own, visit, visit the other, start making progress in their program. And this, it's a, I guess it's a more focused attention on at-risk kids, to make sure that they're, they're making their needs.
Okay, that kind of threw me off and hurt that four hundred, because I visit the alternative school quite frequently because of what I do to session the children. When I left there, I only see about twenty-five, third. And I'm not seeing four hundred, but you're definitely there. All out of gap program, and you've got them, and now all this, and we're talking about a conglomerate of all this.
Right.
Okay, I won't extend that, I'm just trying to give a clear picture of what we're doing, and when I'm talking to their kids and says, dude, I'm on this or that, a lot of times I don't know what he's talking about. That's all I have.
Just recap, just, I'd like to see if we agree with the alternative program.
Sure, I'd just like to say, I think, I hope to see we can afford to continue to look away and leave the program, not necessarily kind of, and maybe.
Okay, let's move on. Rick has, Karen.
The first item of the foundation is for made for thirty-first and tenth quarter. The general public school fund, cash with the trustee is five million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Revenue are at nine point eight percent, and expenditures are at eighty-eight point eight percent. The school federal projects fund, cash with the trustee, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Revenue are at eighty-one point seven percent, expenditures are eighty-four point eight percent. The central cafeteria fund, cash with the trustee is five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Revenue are at nine point eight percent, and expenditures are at nine point eight percent.
Motion to accept my request.
No move.
Your say. Discussion. Do you remember which change of vote?
Miller, yes. Gird, yes. Collins, yes. Warren, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Warren, yes. Parker, yes. Motion.
And now, the other item is, I indeed want to request permission to have a conference with the local senate.
Let's move. Your say. Discussion. Do you anticipate that you will probably be more, be this a lot?
Mr. Chairman, with the one hour lunch there, I just want to serve our students more quickly and put this amount of work with somebody to have it out in the dining room there.
Any other discussion? Do you remember which change of vote?
Miller, yes. Gird, yes. Collins, yes. Rick Moore, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Warren, yes. Parker, yes. Motion.
Add items for action, consider them classified before we anticipate sick leave. I had this put on there, because I had a couple that had come to their attention that they filed a pass that allowed low and large to allow classified before we anticipate sick leave. Of course, we don't have a policy for them, and we would have to adopt the policy, but I wanted to put it on there, get the field forward, but you all thought about whether or not we should offer that to them, now that it's level, or if we need to have a workshop on it, or if we want to have it on.
Just the sick leave bank, we talked about that.
Karen.
This is what I was saying.
It's not the same thing. It's, it's not the same one, but it works the same way. We have a sick leave bank certified.
So this is a separate?
Yeah, let me read the policy right here. It's the purpose of the sick leave bank is to provide sick leave for members of the organization who have suffered unplanned and personal illness, injury, disability, or corneal damage, and whose personal sick leave is exhausted. The sick leave bank shall be administered by the management. Or according to the law and provisions, which may be amended by the improvement of the board. Basically, it's like if you participate, I think you give, is it two, chairing of your days a year, or is it?
For the first three years.
For the first three years.
Are you talking about the initiative?
No, we're, we're on page eight.
Okay.
And so basically, the same thing that the people forget, it would be offering, be classified, make a separate program for, yes, separate program now. There is an issue of how the manager, how is the taking of the sick bank?
Really, not even a big, just, just, I have, I have, I have got myself a quality sick leave bank. How many classified do we have, boy?
Can I do the program down there?
Actually, I attempted to make that all the intent was to mirror the certified. So if you decide you want to offer this, what was happening around the bigger system, their classified people is wanting to do the same thing. So the suggestion at some level is to mirror the same policy.
And, uh, where our kids be? Will we, we just be sharing and crospping information? Do I have kids here? Do we have kids there or here or there?
Their kids, they, her, her, they hear one. It's just, it's just like, you got anything that works.
Okay.
They willing to share. And so that's, uh, uh, that's like Larry, he's a national CPE. And he told me this morning that he's sitting with the Anderson gun group. He says, "We've been sharing several things regarding their own programs."
What they're doing down there.
A lot of good things to say about them.
All right, and another thing I'm sure you should say is we've worked, we've got as many as four hundred students as we, uh, uh, within this program last year. Okay, now, put a focus, uh, those alternative schools for two different reasons. One is for different areas, and another is, is you can't check if you're behind to try to get to catch it. Now, what does the gap program, how does it tie in with, uh, to get those four hundred kids? Wouldn't it have more problems rather than just those two things that I'm thinking about?
Yeah, we, we had kids, uh, two hundred something at Campbell County High, a hundred and something at, uh, I've got a hundred or something, uh, had a hundred and something at, uh, Delco. We had, uh, two hundred thirteen at Campbell County High, a hundred eighty at Delco High, two at, uh, middle to college middle, forty-three there at Ella. And then we had, uh, we have some students that are, uh, like homebound, medically, uh, uh, homebound. And we have-
Were including all these athletes in the program?
Some of these kids that we could help with our, with our, with our home, with their homebound program and what we've got online to help them, uh, see. Alternative school, we don't want to be just here in this place. We want to be a hub of everything that we can do as far as advancing some of the, uh, some of these kids that are at risk.
Now, now, all the personnel that work for these, uh, they're not assigned to the alternative school. We've got four hundred kids. We only have about four or five people assigned to alternative school. But these people that work at the high school that's in the gap program, included in what we're talking about here-
Yes, then also with, uh, uh, we're gonna be doing an extended contract, uh, with, uh, we did last year with, uh, it's like the thing. A child, and she'll work about two hours, uh, in the evening to check all these kids and their problems. And then every two weeks, we check the parents and the residents or the parents and the children, visit the kids and see if they're like progress in their program. And this, it's a, I guess it's a more focused attention on at-risk kids, to make sure that they're, they're making their needs.
Okay, that kind of threw me off and hurt that four hundred, so I visit the alternative school quite frequently because of what I do to session children. When I left there, I only see about twenty-five of them. And I'm not seeing four hundred, but you're definitely there. All out of gap program and you've got them and now all this, and we're talking about a conglomerate of all of this.
Right.
Okay, I won't extend that. I'm just trying to give a clear picture of what we're doing. And, and when I'm talking to their kids and says, "Dude, I'm on this or that," a lot of times I don't know what he's talking about.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Just break out this, uh, I'd like to see if, uh, if great or if it's an alternative program.
Sure, I'd just like to say, I think, I hope to see if we can afford to continue to look away and leave the program necessarily kind of unimaged.
Okay, let's move on, Rick has, uh, Karen.
The first item was the financial for May for thirty-first, the county. The general public's school fund, cash with the trustee is five million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Revenue are at nine point eight percent, and the commission rate is eighty-eight point eight percent. The school federal projects fund, cash with the trustee, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars. Revenue are at eighty-one point seven percent, and expenditures are eighty-four point eight percent. The central cafeteria fund, cash with the trustee is five hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eight dollars. Revenue are at nine point eight percent, and expenditures are at nine point eight percent.
Any member wish to change the vote? I have to work through them.
Nor, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Moore, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes, Morton, yes. And now the other item is, and I need your permission to have a conference meeting with the local senate.
Someone move. For a second. Discussion, is, uh, you're anticipating we will probably be more, be this way?
Mr. Chairman, with the, uh, the one-hour lunch there, I just thought I'd serve some students more quickly and then put this amount of work with somebody to have it out in the dining room there.
Any other discussion? Any member wish to change the vote?
Nor, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Pritchard, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes, Morton, yes.
Really, now, update, play on. Add items for action, consider doing classifieds before we participate in sick leave. Uh, I had this put on there, because I had a couple that had been coming to their attention that they law passed that allowed low employers to be allowed classifieds before we participate in sick leave. Of course, we don't have a policy for them, and we would have to adopt the policy, but I wanted to put it on there and get the field forward. But do you all thought about whether or not we should offer that to them now that it's level? Or if we need to have a workshop on it or if, or if not having that? Is this the sick leave thing that we talked about there?
This is what I was saying, isn't it?
It's not the same thing. It's, it, it's not the same one, but it works the same way. We have a sick leave bank certified.
So this is a separate?
Yeah, let's read the policy right here. It's the purpose of the sick leave bank is to provide sick leave for members of the organization who have suffered an unplanned or personal illness, injury, disability, or a corneal injury. And if personal sick leave is exhausted, the sick leave bank shall be administered by the union. Or according to the law and provisions, which may be amended by the union to improve the performance. Basically, it's like if you participate, I think you give, is it two, Karen, of your days a year?
For the first three years.
For the first three years.
Are you talking about the initiative?
No, we're, we're on page eight. And so basically, the same thing that the big forget, it would be offering to be classified, make it a separate program. Yes, separate program now. There is an issue of how the manager, uh, how is the big, uh, sick bank, uh, uh?
Well, I'm not even big, uh, this is pretty simple. First, I have, I've got myself a call, a certain sick leave bank request that they do. That's, that's probably the part, uh, that's about.
How many classified do we have employees? Can I do the program down there?
Actually, I had to make that call, the intent was to mirror the certified bank. So if you decide you want to offer this, well, we're technically on a bigger system. Their classified people is wanting to do the same thing. So the suggestion at some level is to mirror the same policy on whatever policy you have set up for your classified for certified being the exact same policy. That's kind of what the statute did.
I know they don't have any. Let's send it to a workshop, just.
We need to have, I think, dude, we need to have a policy written in.
Not a bit, we're the same.
You would take your policies that you had in your teaching.
Basically, that's the problem, it would just be adding them.
We would, it has to actually be a separate policy, uh, obviously enough that it's going to be oriented the same way.
Would it have to go through two readings? Could we, you know, kind of speed it up, I mean, the new school year?
You always wait, uh, you do the second reading at the same time, the same-
No, we're not gonna have time.
We move through third day, after one day.
You really just need to decide if you want-
Okay, let's do this, let's have a workshop, uh, at five before next month's meeting. And then we'll talk about it until that time, you can talk. And then we do, we do the third.
I think it's fair.
Is it okay with everybody? We're here to discuss. I believe, considering approving memorandum of understanding from the Campbell County Board of Education and the education professionals in Campbell County. Okay, everybody is aware of the memorandum of understanding, the loss and the group, which Wilson's been working on. Quite some time now. We have a workshop on it, you know, like a week back. You gotta have anything that will add to the discussion of that. I will say that Mr. Marlowe, uh, is concerned about the one area. And that is the sick leave, uh, how we read through the email I got from, uh, created in employees and sick leave days in advance of earning the days. Earn one day for my contract, we write reviews such as camp county or district, certified boards, and, or, or different sources, or some rate, not for me. If they have switched jobs until that distributor begins, so payment intensive days, and you know, before you never can return for it. And it's just one concern that he has, that he wants to share with his employees. That area, what would be hard to, boy, you make the same.
Well, something that I have, I'll read this when I got my paperwork. When they're passing the memorandum of understanding, we want to make sure it's consistent with policies we already had in place. And my suggestion would be that someone go back through this and then try to go to a particular policy section that we can create policy manual. And that way, you can look at the policy section you've already had in place to make sure that it's consistent with this memorandum of understanding. Don't want to create a situation where you can read something with teachers and this memo that is inconsistent with already existed policy. And when you just look at it, how do I have a, a policy manual or I would try to do it? Really, you know, most of them seem like good ideas, but if it's in the language, if it's inconsistent with policy, well, the trunk of this board policy, is it now trumped by this? And that's dividing the definition. So before I enacted it, I would maybe have one of the central office staff just go through and say, "This references policy code eight-six-one-zero-four."
And that hasn't been done, right?
And then that way, if there's an inconsistency in the language, you can decide whether you want to change our policy, language, or you want to change the memo. Just so we can do the exact same thing, that would be my suggestion.
We can all send it, you know?
Projects for everything, you know, we need regulations, we work through the process, but, you know, we have absolutely been through, you know, minute.
Well, the reason I would say you want to take it to the number, is what's gonna happen is each year your policies are gonna change. And so let's say everything's great right now, and then we amend policy briefly, though.
You need to go change it.
If you've forgotten to go back and then it's been written in the understanding, just have each section of that that you can always look at.
How long will it take you to do that?
Well, I mean-
We have to take it back for return.
What's the point of having a MOU if I don't have to work policy?
The MOU is meant to, in a way, substitute for a contract. The MOU would be the ruling document over board policy if there's a conflict. But again, we're within state law and all this where it is some, it might be a little bit different from what the policies are. Some of your policies from the last time, some of them updated as well. And some of them are general, some of them are general, like announcing the meeting on the board, on the board website. Posting, having an up-to-date location on the board website for the board policies either. So that people can go to the board website and, and see those policies. But right now, it's on the tip of my, find a copy of board policies anywhere. I mean, that's just part of them, some of them do, well, sick leave and other things too, but, yeah.
I agree with what I'm saying. That's the whole reason you want this to be consistent, because most systems, and I've got it, that we did have. These policies don't get amended enough, or they get amended and we don't take them with them because else the situation passes the way we're assuming. A teacher's gonna look at that as a contractual document. And it is, and they're into the policy, let's say, next year's board, because all board members look at policy. And that policy is how you to the public to represent and you're gonna handle a certain situation. If you as a board are dealing with this contract with the teachers, and it's inconsistent with the policy, then I, as a teacher, go, "Now, wait a minute, you know, I want policies to follow." While another one would say, "I want this." They need to jump, and if you need to change one or the other, this is the time to do it. And once you get it together, just be a good steward, and then you come to amend the policy. Go, "Wait a minute, we've got this contract with teachers. We can't amend, make this policy, and then let the rest change it."
You can't change the normal understanding issue for the, for the, how, why the conflict.
And that's why if you don't want to sign this, this is the policy.
Okay, so if we could do the policy to you then?
Okay, I think we're okay with that, Sharon, that's what I'm charging. They're saying it's okay, we'll sit down and do that.
If there is a conflict, we can have it made together.
Okay, they're saying it's okay, that one of their representatives, and myself, sit down and do that, so we're good.
I want to follow up on something that Lawson said. Jack, is our policies online?
No, we, we have some of them online, but, uh, the updates and stuff, the old, we get that policy from TSB. And we were waiting for that to be-
We have that on.
So you don't have it online, and that's what, that's why we did not continue on, because you would do that online.
Maybe we can get it online for next school year, because TSB has done that.
It would help me, I could get a current policy manual that is as it says now. I had one when I came along ten years ago, if you all change too much. I would like to have one that is what we have now, that I can reference when questions come up.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we approved one through three, is that not right? Section one through three lasts October. And then we revise all three cities, but-
Their policy policies still keep?
Yes, and you all been working on that, and you, but we want to have it ready for this meeting, but maybe we'll just have it for next meeting.
We'll let, I'm getting these people on, okay? Three, two, three. And then two, you know, there were several changes in the state. There's some hurdles, bro. We have some that we will, so we-
So why don't we do that, and then have those policies ready for adoption? And if we have to discuss it at that workshop, we need, you know, the council to have it approved.
And, oh, you're telling, we're, we're also across as, uh, a little on upgrade on the web, on the website. Including that, and all the new forms, and I almost put the date, but most of the, lots of units get in that rig. And Jack sent me, um, on some of the website, I looked at, uh, uh, I looked at several, uh, books. But it's two, so we had to do that, so we want to have those. We've got several things, uh, I just want to be neat in the morning, uh, very early in the morning, we're trying to do some, uh, some of the policy.
Board of members. Let's move on, consider revising this about fourteen, about fifteen to your calendar, reflect the policy in its market. So that would be that.
This, the state basically has done to the competition next year.
Someone. For a second, any discussion? Any member wish to change the vote?
Nor, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Pritchard, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes, Morton, yes.
Thank you. Consider Frank, King, and the following pictures, Matthew, West, and Aaron, of the legislature.
So the law has been fixed, and let's press through. I'm sure the evaluation has been done, all of them.
Yeah, they have made, they have made all these new expectations, waiting to be picked. The numbers, more or less, well.
Uh, when, when the French change of vision, it's a little bit, but, uh, tenure means so much different, you know, because of this, uh, evaluation, is that not right?
I lose.
You could be on tenure and still be released if you keep getting those, uh, warrants and so on on your evaluation, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And of course, there, there are some new considerations being looked at, uh, State Department.
I keep bringing that, that we're wanting to get a one for about four, three or four times. They consider her one of the better teams they had. I don't know what the state's doing, where we get to voting on this, uh, it's not exempted just because, uh, it's like studying English, you know, and, and they'll say, uh, this is the rule, but you have so many exceptions. So we've got a lot of exceptions to the tenure law. But we're voting on this as a reserve recommendation to French with the student. Okay?
Verifying on fourth or second, second, any further discussion? Any member wish to change the vote?
Nor, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Pritchard, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes, Morton, yes.
Thank you. Consider approving consolidated application for happy, say, yes, today, uh, for, uh, fifteen to two. Uh, and this is the title one, specialated voters.
Title one, two, six.
Briefly, the board, the board, could you say anything to tell us, if you know about it, as far as, like, three, tell us the thoughts you would see this year? And claim that six.
Of course, as the years go on, we get less, so we got about sixty thousand dollars less, um, about, and time of learning. And in tunnel six, we were short, uh, like six thousand dollars. Sometimes I'll come back to a little more allocation, like too much like the other road, but right now, we're short that much. Uh, as we receive our allocation each year, the schools are ranked by their poverty level, going from the highest down to the lowest. So that money is spiraled down according to the poverty needs of the school. All schools in Campbell County are title one. Once that will come up a figure, uh, how much the schools want to get, there is a team that votes on what's going to be spent in that school. That is for your assistants, any interventionist, any personnel that they wish to have in the schools in order to run the program. Any instructional supplies and materials. Those instructional supplies and materials have to go along with the common core subjects, reading, math, and science. And you're, uh, they have a school improvement team that needs, they look at their scores, where they need to make their, uh, gains, and then they correlate what they need to purchase according to what they need in the school.
Go ahead.
And the state has approved, this has to go in online, the state has approved this budget.
Ms. Damm, do you have anything?
On the stage, we actually got an increase of forty-two thousand dollars to share with you. But that was gone very quickly by the increase in interest. And it's very separate, it's line item by line item, it's, uh, you take what you have, and the assistance you have. It's equivalent supply of materials and novels, which is different.
Question, again, if novels float. Someone. For a second. Any further discussion? Any wish to change the vote?
Gil, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Pritchard, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes.
Thank you. There's been a item, consider increasing classifieds employees, see, like, the sick leave, correct, uh, days on the tax, and you, you realize the sick leave for the tax. Wilson had this, but I, we couldn't make it, uh, job, we're planning to do here. But, uh, basically, same, both walk a week, doing, earning time. We're paying fifty dollars, one five, six, twenty, fifty, fifty.
Do I pay fifty dollars, and yet they're not allowed to do the tour every time, so I have to do more than that?
Okay, so if we pass this, is it, you folks, right?
Yes.
Now, my question is, do we have individuals that take seventy-five dollars a week? I mean, in this classified, well, it's a degree right now, do we have some, don't? So if we pass this at seventy-five, they will make more on the shift day than they will if they can't work.
I would think so, if they were that difficult, um, so most of the people work, and they're paid hours, and they, and it's just about the eight to nine.
Is this part-time or full-time?
You don't need for your, you don't need for those people who are full-time and, um, they're supposed to retire. Well, if they actually retire, if they want to make higher pay, if you're full-time and you're in the morning, it's not a standard. I'm not sure that we call people what time they work.
Do, do part-time and full-age, uh?
They aren't sick days.
Do they accumulate sick leave?
Yes, they do.
Well, the way this is written, everybody that works, they can get seventy-five dollars.
Do the part-
Now, if you work fifteen hours a week, if you retire, you accumulate sick days, like you're gonna get the same amount as somebody that's working forty-eight a week.
Four will be now, right?
Four part-time.
Even for our time, but-
Yeah, that's my question.
Karen, for the part-time food?
I do not think it's important to come, if food service may do that, I'm not so sure.
I, I don't know about this that's being presented, but I can tell you food service employees, part-time personnel, are one sick day a semester. They can accumulate as many as he-
Mr. Chairman, we go to this, this morning. I'd like to, I'd put that form a motion to take it, make sure you get the zip on it.
Motion taken, if this is a-
I'll second it, because I think Danny needs to be here.
Okay, motion taken, is there any further discussion? Any member wish to change the vote?
Nor, yes, Bart, yes, Collins, yes, Pritchard, yes, Gil, yes, Lawson, yes, Ford, yes, Harper, yes.
No, I'll, it's a discussion, we can do that perfectly, discuss legally.
I'm wondering, is, is this, um, is your fault, uh, the, the, the decision that I asked about, certain addition, raise for- What has flooded us is good news, um, if you recall, uh, the, 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 that last month, certain issues raised, which were similar to, I guess, I thought. Uh, I've had multiple communications with the, the, and they are happy to, thank you, and so.
Dale, the gentleman that stopped paying him on that check, has that problem been rectified?
Yeah, I've got information from Jeff, but I've never gotten to the call to move forward with that, I see the emails.
I'll make a motion to move forward tomorrow.
See.
Well, what I would, what I would, what I would make, what I would make a motion, would be to authorize Jeff to get you the information.
All right, I'll do that.
Go ahead and approve, let him, we can get it back before we file the lawsuit. And then if, I don't, if he won't willing to get it back, and authorize him to file the lawsuit, that's fine, but it'll need, I'll need the authorized information, Jeff has.
We will, thank you.
The answer, say, conversation, for us, that's fine. Well, if you want to do that, actually, you can, uh, I can file a lawsuit, but I don't think.
Well, you, you can send the letter, and we'll see, kind of see how shakes out.
Here, if Gil had a Jeff.
He's gone.
Yeah, if you get a Jeff, call me, and get me that, if Gil's emailing me, it's, uh, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's just not right.
Because he's ready to go.
Good.
All right, thank you guys.
Aren't these tests going, you all share the highlights about? We, we got, uh, another, we took it to ourselves in time, you, we surely haven't yourselves come out of them.